A Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, February 10th, 2025 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Halverson, absent.
Mrs. Reisner, here. Mrs. Waterson, here. Mrs. Alward, I'm present. Mrs. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Bass.
Here.
And our student board representative, Sam Cook, not here tonight. Arabella Stanley. And Alex Stiltner. All right, we have a call.
All right, thank you for that. It is my understanding we have a modification to the agenda to add Waddles Park Men's Club and their representative, Tony Zebel, to the agenda. And you'd like to read that motion?
Chair calls for a motion to the Harper Creek Board of Education approve modifications adding Tony Zebel, Waddles Park Men's Club as Item E under Communications to the February 10th, 2025 meeting agenda as reviewed.
So move.
To part. Do we want to make it Item E or do we want to just make it a? That'll work. I'm sorry, who moved that?
Mr. Smith and then Mrs. Wallace.
Support my Mrs. Wallace. Do we have discussion? All right, here in C-9, please call the roll.
Mrs. Reisner.
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
I vote yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you for that. Move on to Communications and start with the President's remarks. Welcome to all in the audience tonight, both here and online, watching on YouTube. Board members, please mark your calendars for next Monday, the 17th. I sent out a couple of emails, 5:15 at Battle Creek Central. We're going to enter through the parking lot nearest the football field. So we're going to park in the football field parking lot. We'll go over across the street and they will have represented us to meet us there for the joint area school board meeting that we're going to try to do once a semester every year. So anybody has any questions on that, please let me know. Congratulations to our competitive cheer team who won the all-city meet this weekend. Very neat. Congratulations for our wrestling team, nine wrestlers qualified for regionals, including our own student board rep, Alex Stiltner. Congratulations, Alex. That's very neat. Just a reminder to families that conferences are taking place at each building. Please check with your students' buildings for times and sign up times, dates. With that being said, pass it to Mr. Ridgeway, Administration.
Okay, a few modifications first. We had a cancellation of parent-teacher conferences, the high school, which is rescheduled for this Thursday, although I understand there may be a weather in the forecast at this point, but we'll see. The Waddles Park Elementary Grandparent Ice Cream Social, it's a connection with their book fair, is February 18th at 6 o'clock. It's a really nice event, so if you haven't been to it, it'd be a nice event for board members to attend. I mean, thousands, I would say hundreds of people attended for sure. We do have a half-day of school on February 21st coming up. Elementary records and then middle school and high school teachers doing professional development. And then we don't have school on February 24th, which is, it's a compensation day for teachers. Basically, at the end of conferences, each semester, there is a day where, within their contract, until there's no school for students and staff. The next, beyond the cereal bowl, is March 6th at 8:00 a.m. I know that's a tough time for some on the board, but if you can make it, it has been pretty good of late. Breakfast starts at 7:30. Our high school musical is coming up, Once Upon a Matress, the 14th, 15th, 16th of March. We had our winter carnival dance for high school, but we actually had a bunch of dances the last little bit. So we had a Sonoma Valentine's Dance Friday, Waddles Park Elementary Family Dance Saturday. Next Friday on Valentine's Day, I believe, is... Is that yours, Mrs.?
We already had theirs.
You already had yours, so it's, so Sonoma's is this next on Valentine's Day.
Sonoma and Sonoma deals have yours on the same day.
Okay, so they're all done.
The middle school, middle schools is.
Oh, that's the one. That's fun, isn't it? Okay. So the Piltoff meetings, the casino money meetings with the local revenue sharing board is starting on March 14th. I will check to see if they're having an actual tech check presentation this year. I want to talk, well, I'm going to talk about robotics first. So at the last meeting, we had a question from a comment in the public about funding, and the board had asked to look into the funding that we have as well as surrounding schools. So this is what we found, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of these numbers, Mrs. Obermeyer. It looks like to me, so we have a grant that we received from the state that is almost $8,000, a little shy of $8,000. And then we add in another $3,000 out of general fund. That puts us at about $11,000 in terms of the total amount that is to our robotic, two teams, one middle school, one high school, so 11,000 total. Of which, about $4,000 goes to coaches, who are coaching those teams. And then the rest would go towards the robotics team. As compared, Marshall, they have $19,456, but they have six teams, not, we have two, they have six. So about $3,200 per team. And Lakeview has $18,000 for 12 teams, or 1,532 per team. And ours is $3,990 per team. Now, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that they can get it done for that amount. They do fundraising, expressly corporate fundraisers. When I say corporate fundraiser, they get funds from corporate donations, basically. And we do want to support robotics, so we want to consider that as we move in, put our budget forward. But I want to make sure you knew this is how much we currently spend. And the amount that we have on a general fund, as Mrs. Obermeyer has said, is, it's, when I say comparable to sports, it's actually more than any sport team.
It is. For supplies or for registration, yes.
Because a club doesn't, a club doesn't generally receive funds from the school, right? Like, the junior football doesn't receive any funds from the?
No, junior football is completely separate.
That's a separate thing, yeah.
We sponsor robotics, you know, as a extracurricular at the school, so we do put some money in it. I know you had asked me that question previously. But we found that we are putting some money in. It's definitely not enough to make it sustainable for, I don't know, the kids, the parents, everybody involved.
The donations.
But there is definitely some money in there. Other things, so executive orders, I had sent out to the board, you know, information. I don't want to regurgitate the information I sent, but for people that are watching either online or in the audience, there's been several, and not just executive orders, there's also been court cases that have happened. But one, federal funding freeze, we do not believe that that will affect our funding. We receive money from Title, Title I, Title II, and Title III, as well as IDEA, which is special education funding. That money flows to the state, to the school district. And at this point, that is not going to be affected by this, by the funding freeze. And as a matter of fact, we, the experts that I talked to from the Administration Association of the country is that more than likely will receive about the same money in federal funding next year. Now, I can't guarantee that, but that's, that's what we hear. Immigration enforcement, I had talked about that quite a bit with our staff, as well as with our board. You know, we will follow the law as, as it pertains to both enforcement of immigration as well as our privacy obligations to students. But we did a procedural, step-by-step process for our staff to follow. We will certainly cooperate, it's just a matter of making sure that the correct legal paperwork is there. There was a school voucher order. And even though Congress needs to act on this to make it happen, the details would look like, this is, and this is like preliminary, a $5,200 tax credit for families that would like to attend a private school or be, or homeschool their students. There was a proclamation about gender ideology, ending discriminatory equity ideology, and promoting a patriotic education. I don't have much information on that, to be honest. So I don't really have details of what that is or what that means exactly from, you know, either our state or from any, or the feds at this point, but that was, as I said, more to come on that. Transgender students in athletics was another one. At this point, that means biological males could not participate in female sports. Biological females have always been able to participate in male sports, and my assumption is that will continue. As far as I know, we have not had a biological male participate in a female sport as of yet. And I did notice the NCA changed their policy, and I have not heard from the MHSAA, which is the Michigan High School Athletic Association. And then the last, well, two things, shuttering the Department of Education. Shutting down the department would take an act of Congress, but it does sound like they are laying off some employees from the Department of Education. People ask me, like, what does that mean? And, well, they oversee that money I talked about, the Title and the IDEA. We have something called Grow Your Own that comes from the federal government for our, for our teaching staff to get served. I can't tell you exactly what it means. I, my assumption, and it's just me talking at this point, would be that money would go directly to the state who then would oversee that money. They kind of do now, because when we have audits, it's done by the State Department of Education, not by the Federal Department of Education. So more to come, not, not exactly sure what, what it's going to mean. I know the folks, the same folks, the administrator of association said, that's one thing you shouldn't worry about of all the things that are out there, just, you know, it's going to take an act of Congress to make it happen. And then finally, Title IX, that was a court case that occurred in early January. So Title IX has been reverted back to 2020 standards, and you'll see in our policy revision that we would revise our policy to go back to the 2020 revision. And that was a court decision, not an executive. Okay, I would like to call, I said this last time, but I mean it this time, a building committee meeting the second week of March and a personnel committee meeting the first week of March. We are going to start negotiating with our teaching staff in, in March, so I'd like to call a personnel committee to meet before the board meeting. And then we would talk about it in a closed session about our strategy for negotiations. So does the first week of March look good for those people that are on personnel?
I could be here at 5:00.
5:00 o'clock, any?
Any of the days.
Any of the days, okay. Anything that's a no-go for anybody specifically?
Who's personnel?
I think it's Erin, Sarah, Shay.
Students just want to do it right before?
Right before the board meeting, we could, if you want, because then we would go into, into the closed session to talk about the strategy. I just want to get together and update where we're at, where we think, you know, the things that.
On the 10?
Language and things like that. 10, 10:50, 5:00?
Yep, perfect.
Okay, we'll make that happen. And then the building committee, yeah, we can either schedule later.
Yeah, I prefer that.
You want to schedule later?
Yeah, than taking the time during our board meeting to schedule a meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then, of course, we'll talk about the joint meeting. Remember, the dinner is at 5:15, and then the meeting, I think, is at 6:00.
Dinner starts, I think, at 5:30, but I don't, can't tell you the exact logistics. But I think there's a lot of people there at 5:15, so we can get everybody ready at 5:30. Madam Secretary, anything?
No communication.
Student board members. Guys, have anything?
Um, so, oh, yeah, for Lisa and you and Arabella, David. You know, last meeting, we talked about, I guess, that you know that survey we sent out, you know, with the, how the students felt about, like, their future plan and stuff like that. So we reached out to the counselors, talked a bit. We honestly haven't gotten as far as I would have liked, like, by this point. You know, we need to, need to have another meeting with them and, need to have an in-person meeting with them and talk to them more about that. But basically, what we got from that is we need to bring out all these opportunities that the students, like, they have. These, they have all these opportunities, but they need to, like, know about them. We, like, kind of bring, bring it out so that they're aware of what, what options and roads and paths that they have, like, with, like, college or, like, financially or... So we're there for that. We have to get back to you guys on that, because we have to, we have to discuss it with our counselors. But since Sam isn't here, he asked us to give, like, a little summary of what he was going to say, so.
All right.
Good with that?
Thank you.
Mr. Greenman mentioned that credit requirements will vary, this was about, like, the schedule changing and everything.
Yeah.
Will vary for a few years, and the seminar block will be versatile, catering to specific grade needs, like test prep for freshmen and college essays for seniors, for example. And math and science and KCC students won't be significantly affected as electives remain semester-long. He asked for a survey and plans to discuss it with each grade to get student feedback. Overall, he feels positive about the changes, though they're still being refined.
So that's kind of what led to, like, you know, they had a meeting, so Mr. Greenman was able to talk to the ninth graders, the tenth and eleventh graders, so that they were kind of like, they weren't misinformed and they knew what was going to happen next year for the schedule change, so there's that.
Sounds, sounds promising.
I think for the counselors, just don't forget about, like, the freshmen and sophomores too, like, prepare, like, even though it's not college, like, getting them to understand how to prepare for, like, the enrollment or tech center.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. Zebel, Waddles Park Men's Club, come on up.
Thank you. Well, hi, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Tony Zebel. I'm with Waddles Park Men's Club. For those of you who may not be familiar with us, we're an organization that exists to provide athletic opportunities to the youth of our community in a team-based environment and all of the character-building fund that goes with it. We have six core sports in our calendar that we provide every year. We start at the beginning of the year with basketball, then we run volleyball and indoor soccer, which is what we're about to start now. We have a big spring soccer session that runs in April, May, and into June, which is typically our biggest sport. We run baseball, softball, and T-ball. That runs from, typically, we start in May, runs in June and July. We run a fall soccer session that runs in August, September, and October. We run a little indoor baseball clinic that's kind of become my baby for the last few years in November. Basketball practices start in December, and the wheel turns round and round. We cater to all of the youth in our community. We run programs, some of our programs start as young as pre-K, and we go up to eighth grade. And there are a couple of programs that we offer that are, we offer open to high school students as well. And that's our, that's what we, that's our core demographic of who we serve. And I'm here today to provide our 2024 annual update. So let's get into it. First point I want to talk about are our participation numbers year over year. Overall, across all of our programs, we were very, very close. It's, it's basically the same from 2023 to 2024. However, we do have some trends that are interesting from the sports that we offer. Spring soccer continues to be our biggest sport. It's our most popular, and last year, we had 700 signups. We were not able to accommodate all of those players for various reasons. Some of that is on our end, where we don't have the capacity to fill it. Some of that is on other folks' end, right? You'll sign up in February, and then life happens and plans change, and then they decide not to play. So the signups are not the exact number. We ended up having just over 500 participants that finished the sport with us in the spring. That was our biggest in years and years. And we're seeing strong demand for that now, and I'm anticipating something similar in the spring this year. The other sport that's trending up for us that's really interesting is volleyball. We're about to start our volleyball season. First games are Saturday, so if you're excited and want to watch some youth volleyball, come on out. But this is going to be our biggest volleyball season in at least 12 years. We added a high school league due to demand, which is really exciting. Yeah, it's, 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 it's the first time that we've added a league in a sport for a different age in a long time. So we're really excited about that. So volleyball, spring soccer are trending up. Our basketball program is even. Our baseball, softball, T-ball program is about even year over year with random variances. Fall soccer was down a little bit this year. And then indoor soccer is down a hair, but that's a smaller program, so a lot of that is just random noise. The trending, the, the one program that we've seen trend down is fall soccer. Talking about why that is, one is, if you notice in our core sports, we offer, three of them are soccer-based, right? We have the indoor, like, the footsleth style, which we put, we market as kind of like a supplement to your outdoor sports, right? So it's inside, it's on the gym floor, it's fast-paced, so you're working on ball control, passing, movements, that type of stuff, with a smaller goal. So we, we move, we kind of put that out as a training session. But we have three soccer programs. Spring, everybody seems to be very excited to get out of the house. We've been cooped up inside, we want to go do something. And fall, we've just kind of seen that folks sometimes want a little time off, getting back to school. There's other stuff going on, we've had a busy summer. Like I said, it's not tanking or falling off a cliff, but it is, it is noticeably a trending over the last few years. A million years ago, or approximately, when I first started working at Waddles, as a high schooler doing groundwork, fall soccer was the biggest sport that we offered. And spring and fall have kind of flipped over the last, is that 20 years? I'm going to feel really old. Anyway, over the last about 20 years, they've kind of flip-flopped. So now spring soccer is, is our big soccer session and fall is kind of the, the supplement. So, I'm going to bring this back up, I got to talk too long, my computer fell asleep. Those are our trends for our overall participation numbers. Another thing that folks are typically interested in is who's playing in our program. So where are these kids coming from? This year, like previous years, 2024 wasn't much different. Our programs across the board are Harper Creek pluralities, meaning that the, we have more Harper Creek students than any other class, so school district or homeschool, which is getting bigger. Our biggest Harper Creek sport concentration right now is going to be this 2025 volleyball season, where we are over 40% Harper Creek. Typically, our numbers across the board are between 35 and 40% Harper Creek students. There's random noise that makes that vary throughout the years. Typically, it go, it's, that's where we start, and then it's the various other areas, school groups. And the other one that we've noticed that's a trend that's interesting is the, the folks that identify as homeschool that are coming to us, like, that was, we had a sport this year where that was our, if homeschool was a school district, that would have been the fourth biggest, which is wild for us, that's never really happened. So anyway, that's what we're looking at. It's not, it's pretty similar to years past. But again, volleyball, for, for whatever reason, the numbers are growing. And that's, there's a large number of Harper Creek kids that are in that, which is, which is fun to see. I would like to go to our financial state for 2024. So we closed the year 2024 at a slight deficit to the tune of a couple thousand dollars. And this is due pretty much exclusively to greater-than-anticipated maintenance and utility costs at our building. We also had a one-time expense with our outdoor concession stand. That was pretty large. And we're, we're making some adjustments to that so that we don't have that happen again. For those who are unaware, we run concession stands at both, both our indoor building and our outdoor facility. Both of those are licensed through the Health Department, we have two licenses, one there, one here. So there's standards we have to maintain, right, to keep our food licenses. So sometimes there's, you know, maintenance costs there that there's, there's no, like, it's got to get done. And so we do it. We have, we're meeting with our board of directors. We've met, we've started 2025 with a real strong commitment to raising more funds through donations. And we're off to a pretty good start with the first month or so. The reasoning for this is because as we, as, not just for us, I'm sure you see it, you see it in your households, costs are increasing pretty much, you know, for, for lots of different things. And we are really committed to maintaining our prices for our participants where they are. This last year, we had two sports that increased in price. One was by five, or they were both by $5. Typically, across the board, we are the least expensive option or among the least expensive options around town. We're the only basketball program that I was aware of that you could play for under $100 this year. Volleyball is similar. There are some soccer areas that are, that are priced pretty well. Some of those are entities that are funded by taxpayer dollars. So that's, you know, a little bit harder for a self-funded organization like us to undercut. But we're, we're really, really focused on keeping our prices as low as we can for as long as we can. That's kind of our whole mission, the reason that we exist, that we started years ago, before I was born, and the reason why we're still doing this now, at the gist of it, is we want kids to play sports. And if there's no areas where kids can play sports, where it's easy to sign up, it's accessible, there's no cuts, and it's affordable, you know, affordable, then, then kids are just going to do other things. So it's really important for us that we continue that, which is why we've turned into this, our fundraising status here. We actually, we got a title sponsor for our basketball program this year. And we're hoping to try to model that for all of our programs. And that's really going to go a long ways in helping keep the program sustainable at the cost level for the participants that we, that we currently have. We do have a couple other revenue streams that are outside of our concession sales, our player fees, and our sponsors. We do rent the building out occasionally. We've got a group of folks, there's actually a lot of number of Harper Creek teachers that are playing in this, I noticed the last time I was up there. We've got a Sunday night volleyball group that turned into a, almost an all-day Sunday thing. So we now have adult volleyball for fall, summer, and spring, or not fall, sorry, not summer. Fall, winter, and spring, we have adult volleyball in the building from about 11:30 in the morning until 8:00 at night. So they pay, they pay us rent to use the building. We open it up, we're onsite to make sure that, you know, if anything happens, you know, somebody's got to be there. That's been very valuable for us, again, also in terms of keeping us running and keeping our prices where they are, is being able to utilize areas of the calendar that are outside of our core programs. Just to clarify, we're never going to do anything like that to affect our core programs. That always goes, everything starts with our core programs, and then we kind of, you know, fill in around there. I want, I was asked to talk a little bit about our building and maintenance operations and some notes there, and I have some notes for us here, as I kind of alluded to before. The biggest issues we've run into are the cost to operate utilities. The biggest one is we've, I would say that we underestimated the, both the effort and the cost to keep that place clean to a standard that would make us happy. It, it's a lot of man-hours, and it's a lot, especially on these winter days where you get a lot of folks in. It is a bear keeping street shoes off the courts. There's a lot of mopping, we've broken two mops already from vigorous mopping this year. But that, that, I would say, those are our biggest day-to-day operational hurdles there. In terms of staff, there's currently two full-time folks who are, are working there. It's me and a guy named Nick Roush. He does all of our operations and facility stuff and anything else that I need him to. And then we also have a small army of high school and college kids that are hourly folks who help fill in when we're busy on game days and when we need cleaning and all of that type of stuff. And in the summer, they do a lot of our fieldwork, measuring, painting, picking up trash, that type of stuff. And in the summer, they do a lot of our field work, measuring, painting, picking up trash, that type of stuff. We're, we have a few, I would say, maintenance needs. The biggest one is we're due for a floor refinish soon, which we're currently working on raising funds for. From a longer-term perspective, we have some, we we need to put some more investment into our outdoor baseball fields. They're still playable and all of that, but they're showing their age. And that will be likely another thing that we'll need to fundraise for here soon. From a day-to-day operations note, the biggest part for the building that we've noticed are that, is that when we have, specifically when we have a lot of snow and there's a lot of snow pushed off to the side, parking can get real tight down there. We've, we've worked to, it's not just the number of spots, what we've also noticed is the folks, it can be real difficult on Saturdays specifically, which is our, you know, where we play our games, to turn left onto Michigan Avenue. Because there's no light there, right? So it's, it's just, there's a lot of traffic and sometimes there's not a break in traffic for 30, 45, 60, 90, whatever seconds. And there can get a line that kind of backs up into the parking area. We've taken a couple of steps to deal with that. The biggest one is we've moved a number of games to offsetting times. So we'll have a couple of games that start on the top of the hour and a couple that start at the half hour with the idea that we're trying to break up the traffic flow a little bit. I think that's been fairly successful, but there really isn't a way around some of the weeks when we have, as you guys, you know, the number of cars can vary wildly, right? So on the days when grandma and grandpa show up and mom and dad and cousins and everybody else, you might, it gets tight in there. So we've looked, we're, our board is talking about some options of what we can do. But for now, that's, that's the, what we've taken to kind of mitigate that, that issue. The other operational issue we haven't had now, but is more of a summer one, is we've had a, I'll, I'll say an explosion of folks driving golf carts around the soccer and baseball fields during games and practices. To the point where we've made, we've put up a couple of signs at our entrances and published it in our newsletters about asking not to drive those on the sidewalks and by the fields during practices and games. It really just becomes an issue when you have high foot traffic. And it's, that's just a, that's a liability that scares us a little bit. You have a lot of kids, small kids, running around. We have the, if you're kind of familiar with our facility, you know, if you're parking kind of behind Waddles Park Elementary and you walk up that sidewalk, there's the little storage building on the left, there's kids that run all the way around that, it's a blind corner, right? So somebody's driving their golf cart up. And a kid runs around the building, it scared us enough to put some signs up and to try to basically turn people around when we're going on there. And if anyone here on the board or otherwise has words of advice for me on that, I am all ears. So please, I would love to hear, to get some feedback on that or what we can do better there. Those are my thoughts for 2024. Looking into the future, we have a few areas of immediate interest or growth. The biggest one are, we, it seems like we are kind of underserved in the summer and the fall. We have some pretty big holes in the calendar and we have a lot of people requiring about things that we can do there. So what we're looking to implement this year are a number of camps and clinics. We're also looking at, we're workshopping programs for younger children that are not necessarily based on leagues or hard skills, but just like get to know soccer or get to know a, like a four-week class where you come on two days and we have a different sport each day and you get to see the ball and the court and do activities that way. We've had a number of people reach out for that. So we're kind of workshopping what that might look like. We've also had a lot of requests for summer basketball. So we're looking at some options, we don't want to clone our current basketball and just run that in the summer. That's a lot harder to do for a variety of reasons, but we are looking at doing either like a three-on-three or a series of clinics or just some type of a more structured than an open gym, but something to get kids shooting hoops in the summer because there are a lot of people asking about that. The other thing we can do immediately is increase our indoor baseball capacity. So I, in November, that part of the schedule, it's a long time ago, some of you will remember, it used to be floor hockey in our calendar. That is not happening because it will destroy our floors in the new building. So I've taken to doing like an indoor baseball, kind of a skills clinic, we run scrimmages in there and it's great. The problem with it right now is it's my baby and it's low capacity, so I run the whole thing. And there's only so many folks that we, kids that we can actually fit in. We filled that league in less than a week and a half this year. So we need to figure out a way to add capacity to that. And that will, that'll go a long way towards getting more kids playing and also filling kind of some slower times in our, in our calendar. And then the other goal for this immediate year is to continue pushing through with our fundraising efforts with stronger community outreach so that we can continue to keep our prices low and operate as we do. Longer-term goals, we'd like to identify, this is coming from our board. We'd like to identify new areas of programming that are valuable to the community, ideally in those slower summer and fall seasons. We'd like to develop stronger relationships with sponsors that we're starting this year. So it becomes, they can kind of roll into just like a community partnership type of relationship. And then we want to remain a strong partner of Harper Creek Schools and provide the Harper Creek community with programs and opportunities that uphold the values that you set for the district. So that is my little 2024 overview of the Waddles Park year. I would love to answer any questions that anyone has either now or after. I'm happy to give out my selling email to anyone who's interested. Or if you just want to talk shop, I sure love doing that. So anyone who's interested in that, you've got my ear.
Hey Tony, the majority of the the hourly employees, the high school kids helping out, the majority of those Harper Creek kids?
Yes, they are, I can do this in my head. All but one of the hourly high school kids are Harper Creek and both of our college hourlies are Harper Creek grads. So we're not exclusive, but we're close.
Can I suggest that adults who play volleyball really love a drop-in tournament? So if you're looking for a way to fundraise, you could charge per team and it's really pretty low me and stay do their own line judging, do their own scoring. You just need somebody to be there for however long you want to do it. I mean, not huge, but if you did it a couple times.
Yeah, I think that's a great, I'm, I'm taking notes right now, I think that's a great idea. And yeah, that that also is nice because you can kind of forecast the open spots on your schedule or like the slower spots of the year and that's a great idea, thank you.
Tony, who's your title sponsor?
The Blue Oval Ford Factory that's going up, they were our basketball title sponsor. So we've been shopping these sponsorships to start as two different forms. We've been general sponsor, which gets you a banner, placement on our website, a shout-out in the newsletter. And then we've been shopping title sponsors, which are a significantly higher amount of money. They get banners as you walk in for all the sport, or for the the sport that they're titling. And then they get a thank you and a title and a blurb at the top of every single newsletter that we send out weekly for the, each sport. So like, for example, the basketball newsletter was going out to 450 emails weekly with typically like in between an 80 to 85% open rate, 60-ish percent click rate on things in there. So we've been, I've been saying, we've been kind of pushing that as the value prop to try to, you know, say that, if you're a title sponsor for this, we're really going to demonstrate that you're supporting the youth sports in our area and we're going to get you in front of those eyes so that people are aware that you are the folks who are, are really stepping up to help this particular program, basketball in this case.
Is still doing scholarships for students?
Yes, absolutely, that's a good point. So I did kind of gloss over the intro here, sometimes I don't want to take up too much of your time and bore you, but we do, we let anyone play who signs up. Full stop. So we intentionally, when you go on, you go on our website to sign up for volleyball, for example, you fill out the form, there's no mention of, no mention of payment. That's on purpose. The purpose is that we don't want that to be a barrier to entry for anybody. If you're out of work, if you're having tough time, whatever it is. If you want to play, you're going to play with us. Assuming we have room, obviously, you're not on a waitlist. But you, if you sign up like everybody else, if you want to play, you're going to play, full stop, and we'll figure it out. So yeah, we have typically, it varies per sport and year, there's noise. This last basketball season that just finished, we scholarshiped approximately 5% of players. So yeah, yeah, we still do that and it's, that's an important part of who we are.
And last question is student pricing, how is that? I think when I was coaching, you know, 20-plus years ago, it was, I think we were 35 bucks a sport, so where are we at now?
That's a great question, it varies by sport. So one of the things that we've done in the last, maybe probably since COVID, so last four years or so, is we've really taken a look at, and we used to kind of operate where everything was just like a big, big pot, right? Where it all goes in, it all goes out, we operate as one entity. We tried to pull that out so that we were pricing sports accordingly. So based on how expensive they are to run. So our most expensive sports to run are baseball by a long shot and then basketball. There's various reasons, officiating is more, baseball, I mean, you're using new baseballs every game, right? And baseballs now, if they're any good, you know, like, we can't send, so we, we use a pitching machine for a lot of our baseball leagues. The synthetic cover cheap balls will not work, they will, they will, they won't throw strikes everywhere, so we have to have leather, nice, normal leather baseballs. Those are nine bucks a ball now. So imagine at least two of those for every game for the whole season. They're a longer game, so we have to pay the officials more. Baseball, so rattle it down, baseball and basketball are $90 apiece. Our soccer sessions are 75 apiece, baseball is 80 apiece, the indoor baseball session is a mere $45. But that's where we are for the most part, you know, depending, going from other options in the area. We are on par or below with everything else in the area. Soccer, there's a couple of entities that undercut us, well, there's one and they're, they're funded by taxpayer dollars and that's a little different animal that we're dealing with. But we do run a longer season, we have more games and more practices with theirs, so there's a little bit of a value prop there.
Maybe the last piece is just for those who might be online or in the audience that don't know or current board members, maybe 30 seconds to a minute just on what the relationship is between the men's club and Harper Creek.
Absolutely, so we are, we operate entirely on Harper Creek School District property. We are, we've kind of tasked with kind of promoting community good through athletics and keeping up the property to a standard so that the school doesn't have to, the goal is that the school shouldn't have to lift a finger or pay a dime towards doing, or funding, doing anything with the property, cutting grass, doing whatever it is. And we in turn use it for our athletic endeavors to make, give opportunities for the youth. This has been a relationship that's kind of grown throughout the years. It started off, again, before I was born, so I'm getting history lessons from folks in the community here. It started off as a group of dads, with hence the name men's club, which is a question that we get a lot, that wanted to get kids out, get kids together and get them playing sports. Started with baseball and then grew to basketball and soccer and floor hockey and a bunch of other things. And it grew kind of into the big, it started very small, you know, with a group of just a small group of, you know, Harper Creek dads and kids. Then it grew into this entity that you see here today. We still have the core values that they did from the start. And we have the strong belief that we are, are, we're kind of symbiotic, I guess, with Harper Creek, that we provide value to the school and the school obviously provides value to us in return. All so that we can give more opportunities to the kids of our community.
So 30-year lease on the building, is that right? 20-year lease, is that right?
That's good.
I think just, I'm, I'm, I'm just think, so I was not a Harper Creek student, but I did grow up in Waddles Park. And so like, I think that it's amazing that you guys have continued to like be open, be for the community and you're continuing to grow. And I think that, I hope that you pat yourself on the back or continue to give this opportunity to the community because it's amazing to see it, you know?
Well, thank you, I'm not, I'm certainly not going to pat myself on the back, but I will pat a lot of the, all the folks around us, right? Because it's really not me, it's the folks who are volunteering, it's the folks who are on our board, it's the folks who show up to our community day in the spring and help us clean up the fields and get ready. I mean, tho- those are the folks, like we, we, some guy isn't going to come and do it, it's, it's the community. And it's like to what you're speaking of, right? If I think folks see the value in bringing folks together in a larger program, right? Because the, the value add and why it's not just exclusively Harper Creek kids all the time is that you can run your own leagues, right? If we just had, you know, if you have just like, well, here's one team, well, that's great for, you know, folks who want to go and play everywhere, but not everybody wants that right away. So you have a lot of value in having enough participants total to be able to have a nice building facility and run leagues or every game's a home game, right? And there, there's value to that and I think there's, there's certainly people that see that and we do too, so thank you.
Thank you, Tony, and do give yourself a pat on the back. And also would be unfair to not mention Gary Lincoln and his contributions to the men's club and the people that have come before him, so thank you to all.
Definitely, thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Greenman, open lunch and high school scheduling update.
Good evening.
Good evening, so on behalf of the high school, I'd like to echo everything you just said. Thank Mr. Z Bell for everything he does for our community. Obviously, he learned from the master in Mr. Lincoln. And the things that the men's club has done for our kids and our community over so many years is, is just unbelievable. So thank you, Tony, for all that you do. Thank you also for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about our open lunch and about the scheduling process that we're going through right now with our open lunch. As you will remember, it's something that you guys approved of for last year, kind of a reward system for our seniors. And we've got 58 seniors currently that have taken advantage of our open lunch. Remember that is a privilege, it is something that they have earned. We've got kids that you got to make sure that you're passing all of your classes, so we do a weekly eligibility, very similar to what is done in our athletic program. Also, a student can't have during the current semester any type of in-school or out-of-school suspension in order to have the privilege of being able to leave during lunch. They also have to make sure that they have a signed permission slip from their parent or guardian, giving them permission to leave at lunch. And we also have our hall monitor that sits by the exit. So when they leave for lunch, they have to sign out and then when they come back, they have to sign in. So I'm happy to say that we've only had one student this year that has lost their privilege of open lunch. It was a temporary loss and giving that person a second chance, but came back extremely late from lunch. And one of the consequences is that it was taken away for a period of time. So overall, I feel like it's, it's gone very well for us this year. We have 88 juniors right now that are on a list of, we gave a incentive for when they took their PSAT exam in the fall, that if they did well on that exam, we threw out a carrot to where they could earn open lunch after spring break for this year. So in addition to the 58 seniors, we will have 88 juniors. Doesn't mean that they'll all do it, but they, if they get their form signed and follow through with everything, they will have that privilege extended to them this spring. So as far as our high school scheduling update, to kind of give you a history on that, I think it's been something that's been talked about for years. As you know, we're on a block schedule. And last year, there was probably five or six meetings that took place with high school staff, counselors, high school administration, just trying to figure out, is there a better, better approach to delivering instruction to our students other than the way that we've been doing it for the past 20 to 25 years? When the school year ended, we didn't really have a definitive answer. So we continued this year with additional meetings, trying to figure out what trying to figure out what might be best. And at the present time, with a leadership team at the high school made up of counselors, MTSS coach, special education coach, uh, myself, Mr. Uricius, the vice principal, uh, Mrs. Williams, Mrs. Burkhart here in the, uh, administration building, we've been meeting along with, uh, several meetings with staff, uh, getting input from our students. We met with our, uh, current ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders to get some feedback from them. We had a high school parent meeting, got feedback from our parents. Uh, we had a eighth grade parent meeting scheduled for last Thursday, but that, unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate. So we're, we're trying to get as much information from people as we can, uh, you know, as we continue to move forward. Some of the main reasons that we have been looking into, uh, potentially bringing to you, uh, a recommendation or bringing that to Mr. Ridgeway is, uh, to me, the biggest one is just the, the gap in learning that takes place right now in a, uh, block schedule. So the example I always use, it, it could be used with really any one of our core classes. Take English as an example. If, when kids sign up for classes, the computer spits out their schedule, and let's say they have English one first year of their freshman year. Second semester, they could not have an English class, and you have the normal summer slide. And then first semester of their sophomore year, they could not have an English class. And then the next time they take English would be the second semester of their sophomore year. So then you compound that potentially with, same with math, the same with social studies, the same with science. There's that huge learning gap. So that, that's the one that stood out to me as we've been through all of these meetings and doing research and trying to figure out, you know, what would be a better way to deliver instruction, uh, that was one of the, the driving forces for me. Another one was our, our standardized test scores. Uh, so we took it upon ourselves to kind of compare ourselves to, uh, like schools, and we went back about fifteen years with, uh, testing, with PSAT testing, with SAT testing. And unfortunately, when we compared ourselves to like schools, we were pretty much at the bottom. Now, it's not to say that the magic wand is to switch to a traditional schedule, and that's gonna change that, but on the other hand, to continue to do the same thing over and over and expect a different result didn't really make a whole lot of sense to us. So another reason, uh, that, that we've been looking into this. Then when you think about, uh, I'll call it a teacher shortage, I don't know if that's the, uh, official term, but I do know that we've had a science position open all school year and have not been able to fill that position, and, uh, only had one candidate for that position, and it happened to be someone that wasn't qualified. So, uh, we haven't been able to fill that science position all year. And then we're projecting quite a few retirements from the high school. I believe the middle school's in the same situation, and it appears that, you know, a group of people that may have come in together into education kind of at the same time are probably gonna be going out at the same time. And, uh, from, from what I understand, with a traditional schedule, uh, staff, you don't need as many staff as you do in a block schedule. So that's kind of another reason that we've, uh, been looking into this. One, so our, our, what we're planning on doing with approval would be a six-hour day. When I say an hour day, it's probably gonna be more like fifty-six, fifty-seven minutes long with a seminar. So essentially, a seven-hour day. The seminar would only be about thirty minutes. The seminar would be, uh, a situation where in the high school, we don't really have like a homeroom. So there's been an emphasis in our district on social-emotional learning, which I'm sure you'll agree is very important for our kids today. And we have not been able to be as intentional in the high school with SEL than, say, the middle school and the elementaries have been able to do. But with a seminar class, it would be one where our, uh, freshmen would be together, sophomores, juniors, seniors, and we could be more intentional with each one of those classes, with so- social-emotional learning, with whatever their needs are at that level, you know, of development. So for instance, our freshmen, they might need to learn more about what's it like going into the high school? What are the traditions of the high school? Uh, what's it like to, uh, how do you behave when you come into a high school building? Our seniors have been through that for four years, they need more direction on how do you apply for, uh, college applications? Or if you're gonna go into the workforce, how do you work on, uh, filling out an, an application for a job? So, uh, we, we feel like we can be more intentional, our, uh, we're getting great training, as you already know, I think, from Terry Torzinski with our counselors and our support, uh, staff. So we want to be, have more time where our counselors can push into a classroom, that being that seminar class, on more of a regular basis. So we actually, we just feel there's a lot of advantages to it, uh, having the opportunity to meet with our kids and, and our parents. Obviously, there's a lot of questions that they have, and it's kind of a, uh, a moving target still, because every time you think you've got something solved, something else comes up. And like most people, they're gonna wonder globally, it might sound like a great idea, but then they narrow it down to them. How does it affect them? But we had great questions by our students when they came in, had some silly ones, like how long is lunch gonna be? How long is the, you know, class exchange gonna be and things like that, but those are things they need to know. But if you don't give them information, they come up with their own information, and sometimes that's not correct information. So it's been advantageous for us to meet with them, uh, see what they have to say. And like I said, we're meeting on a, on a weekly basis right now, still trying to work everything out, but, uh, I think we're moving in the, in the right direction, and hopefully within a month, we'll have even more information for you. So, any questions that you might have over the open lunch or, uh, scheduling?
Yeah, more of a comment than a question.
Yep.
I, I happen to sit in the parent meeting at head, and I, I, my bias is certainly to agree with the, the change that's being proposed. But another piece of it, and, or, how many staff members did we have visit Adley Stevenson High School?
It's just around fifty, I think.
So.
We have a series of.
And I think we've all heard about that, right? We, we had a, we've made a significant investment in going to visit a school in Illinois that is arguably one of the best in the country. And the reason you do that type of benchmarking is to, uh, to borrow the good ideas that are working elsewhere. So I know Adley Stevenson was on the, uh, this traditional versus block schedule. So again, just, um, you know, out of deference to the, uh, the, the investment we've made in, in trying to learn from people and schools who are doing it well, I think we would do ourselves a disservice if we didn't pay attention to what we learned when we went out on the road, so.
Have we looked at, like, um, other schools? One, I think if our student board members, both mine, maybe we could survey the students to see how they feel after Adrian met with everybody? Um, and leave, um, the information directly instead of just kind of like talking about it amongst themselves. But have we looked at how other schools who are on a block schedule handle that learning gap that you talked about? You know, how when there, I know schedules are like a huge undertaking, and it's very difficult, and I don't want anyone to come for me, because I'm not saying that you guys need to overhaul how you're doing it, but is there something else maybe you could look into as well, just how they're mitigating that learning gap?
Yeah, to my knowledge, locally, the only school district is Olivet. I think pretty much everybody else has moved to a traditional schedule, but that, that's a good thing to look at.
Mr. Ridgeway, when do we have to land this plane?
Well, I believe that, um, my understanding is that we are in process of moving forward. Um, I don't wanna say that, what would happen with the board at, at the board level is what you'd approve is graduation requirements that would be changed based on the, the change schedule, as well as the course book that's being created currently. But that, we have to schedule by, um.
March third.
March third? Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Is it? So.
Good. Get this done, right?
Right.
Okay.
So I'm not asking the board to make a, uh, vote on if we're gonna change schedule or not. What I'm asking the board to is if we do change, we'll have to change some of our, um, coursebooks as well as our, uh, graduation requirements.
Anything further for Mr. Green, Greenman?
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate the explanation. Very well done. All right, move to district updates, curriculum. Mrs. Williams, good evening.
Good evening. Um, since we last met, last board meeting, lots of work with continued professional development on what we call tier one, our viable curriculum. We had Janice in our elementaries all last week, um, in classrooms and with grade level teams to, um, continue their, deepen their understanding around the components of bridges, which is our math board-approved curriculum. Likewise, mid-school math will be here, um, the end of this month to be in classrooms. So we have, um, individual teachers have mentors, then we have the teams support each other, then we have our instructional coaches, and then we bring people that are experts in that curriculum on periodic basis. So there's lots of layers to support and deepen our understanding around the curriculum. Um, we are looking, our, um, high school, we have a couple piloting math. I've played a lot of phone tag over the last six weeks, um, but Kalamazoo and Troy and actually several other schools, this isn't in there, but, um, we're trying to get a date schedule where we can get into those math classrooms so our teachers can just kind of see it in action. We had our district PD day where all, everyone was learning. So lots, lots of professional development. Assessment-wise, our NWA, um, reports will be with our school improvement meeting for time with you in March. And then our summer programming, we are moving forward, um, very quickly on that. I was at the high school at a meeting, and one of our supervisors said, "All the first round notes are out." So we're ahead of schedule, or at least on the schedule we want to be for that, so. Mrs., uh, Chapman, Tammy and I hosted a networking session for Grow Your Own so they could just share what's working as they're trying to mitigate working and going to college. Uh, and that was last week. So those are the nuggets. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
I know kindergarten countdown is.
Oh, yeah, that, sorry.
Just like, has that in their mind. The first kindergarten countdown is the twentieth of March, so it's coming up.
Yep, and they're feeling really solid about the communication. I mean, we're fighting it, so.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, move on to facilities. Mr. Robinson, good evening.
Thank you, sir. I, uh, submitted our report. Um, a couple of things, uh, I, I, we're working, the crosswalk is actually working now, so I am going to resubmit that to, uh, get it taken over by the county and the city, and we'll see where we can go with that as far as getting some responses, as far as getting help, uh, getting our drivers to acknowledge it. I tried using it today and about got ran over. Literally, I was standing out in the road, and cars still just flew right by me, so it, it's, but anyway, it is working correctly. Um, and then we're just starting our summer planning right now and getting, like, Mrs. Williams said, we're gonna have summer school going on, plus our, you know, our maintenance, uh, filter first is gonna create, take a lot of our efforts this summer. Um, and, and then our regular maintenance as well.
Are the autonomous cleaning machines in yet or not?
They are in, they're not operational. We're still working on some training with those right now. They were installed last weekend. Pretty excited about seeing those.
Will those do like a major chunk of the hallways, but somebody have to go through and get the edges, or will do that?
Right, yeah, they'll do like the majority, and then somebody will have to come through and like do some fine, fine tuning work. Um, good spots be like, uh, our varsity hall areas, our gym floor areas, stuff like that.
In the middle school and high school?
Yes, sir. Something I've been looking at for probably five or six years now.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Robinson?
The building committee will look at summer projects, which is that meeting in the second, like, March, I will.
All right, thank you. Uh, finance and Mrs. Obermeyer.
Good evening. I have submitted my normal, um, board reports, but, uh, the big one is the first budget revision of twenty-four, twenty-five. I, um, wanted to talk a little bit about the nuggets. As you know, we started, um, in June, we, we, you guys passed the budget for this year based on some assumptions of the, um, state, the state level. One of those being that, um, there would be an increase to foundation allowance, and there, and there wasn't. We estimated a two-hundred-and-forty-one-dollar increase, um, to the base foundation. It stayed the same, which is nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-eight dollars. Um, and so with our, with our count that we estimated, that was a six-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-dollar difference from our original budget. Another thing that, um, the, uh, committee assumption we used was our spring count, which is actually usually a little bit lower than our fall. Historically, it has been. Um, this year, our spring count was fourteen, um, higher than what, what it, our fall, fall ca- count came in, so, uh, the decrease of fourteen FTE was a hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand dollars less. So that's a, that, that was a big change. Um, one thing that made up of the state change, I guess, um, I gave you a one sheet, I don't know if you guys have that in front of you.
It's in the folders. If you have the sheet of papers, try to color code it, yeah.
And I just pointed out some of the bigger things that, um, you know, changed. Those were, those were the two big ones, uh, the, the revenue. There's, there was, you'll see an increase to some grants that I just didn't have the numbers in, but I also didn't have the expense. Um, and then you'll see an increase of three percent. I don't know if you guys have heard in the news about this three percent repayment to some employees. Um, it's a retirement that they've, that people who chose at one time, um, to fund their retirement health insurance, it's fully funded, and so they're wanting to pay that money back. Um, so I had no way of knowing what that number is. They still haven't given it to me. I, I ran a number, um, based on last year's information, and it was right around three-hundred-thousand dollars that would be coming in and out. So that, that's a change in the state, also an increase, but it, it comes back out at the bottom.
Yeah, the color code is, so the blue is, the blue go together, the orange and the orange go together, purple and purple.
Uh, a federal is just a, a little bit of an increase to the grant, but then again, that, that's just, um, an increase to expense. Grow Your Own, um, I, it was just my estimated numbers on what the Western would be, and we have more, more students in, um, or more employees taking advantage of that program, um, so that's an added expense. The, um, incoming transfer increase of four-hundred-and-ninety thousand, a big chunk of that is special ed, uh, education reimbursement, and that would be, we added a program at Beeta Lake, and then we also, um, have one, more one-on-one aides based on IAPs, um, and that is one-hundred percent reimbursable, um, by the ISD, and that comes out at the bottom also. There was a reduction in retirement percentage, and so there was a benefit to the, um, budget by approximately the bottom line of being around six-hundred thousand, uh, with grants and everything, since we fund some, um, people out of title and at-risk grants. It, while it was a benefit, it didn't benefit the bottom line, that, that percentage, uh, reduction in retirement. A couple of other things, um, like I said, the big, the big adjustments from the original budget is just revenue, the decrease in FTE and the zero percent foundation allowance, but our maintenance and operation is something else, uh, just like everyone else. Um, our increase, I estimate usually around, I try to estimate about a five, sometimes ten percent increase, depending on the trend of things. In this maintenance and operation, this is just a trend, so we're only in, this is through June. If nothing changes, I have a twenty-three percent increase in electricity from where we were last year, uh, a twenty-four percent in tools supplies and equipment, um, and then a thirteen percent in some building and ground, uh, maintenance. And so that took up a chunk of, if you look at maintenance and operation, there was an increase in expense. increase in expense, and that, that's just, now that's if we did not, that's just looking at, you know, through Ja- January of last year, looking at that compared to January of this year and trying to do, do my best estimation. But those are the major, the K-12 communications was an expense, EAB programming that I had not accounted for in the original budget, and then if you look down at before and after care, we added a middle school childcare program, so that accounts for the added expense there, but again, our, we're hopefully gonna offset that by a little more revenue from that also. So in the end, last year, based on the final budget, we did end up adding four-hundred-thousand dollars more than what was estimated, so that, that helps a little bit, and we were at ten-point-four percent of the original budget, or the original budget you passed, and we're at nine-point-eight right now. So we would be in the negative, a deficit, by a little bit more than what the original, again, this is a conservative budget, based on the trends that I'm, I'm seeing right now. Another thing I wanted to point out is there's some information I just don't have with the retirement, if you look at the revenue, something called retirement offset, I had to use what, what, it's paid quarterly, we've only received one quarter, and it was down fifty thousand compared to last year, and so I just estimated, you know, the four quarters, I'll know in February if that's the case, you know what I mean? So it's, it's somewhat of a looking at last year and, and trying to do, but I, I plan to come every month with any changes that I see, like that, that retirement, I'll be able to tell you if it is on trend, you know what I mean? The electricity, I'll be able to tell you if it continues on that trend, so.
Yeah, I just kind of, a couple of things, I like to make things super simple, so in our original budget, we did not get as much revenue as we thought, and we didn't save as much in what the gov, or what the legislatures did, they basically said, here's us saving things in retirement cost for the district. We had thought it would be about a million dollars, it really is about six-hundred thousand dollars, that's a pretty big amount, plus the amount we lost in revenue that we had budgeted. It puts us in a situation where we, we were at about a one-point-three million dollar deficit, up to a one-point-nine million. I want to be really careful for people in the audience or those online that are listening, we have a, a fund balance in the district where we saved money over the last, really ten years, and we, we put ourselves in a spot where we had a fifteen percent fund balance to start this school year, a little over six million dollars. This would eat into that if we use it up, we are gonna tighten our belts.
And it is conservative.
We do budget conservatively, so we don't think we're gonna finish at one-point-nine million, hopefully much better. Now Ginger Prom, she told me I couldn't say what I think it's gonna finish at, because that way it doesn't put a target on everybody's back, but much better than one-point-nine million, we had a meeting with administrators last Thursday during the snow day to talk about this, so that they understood what, what position we're in, but I don't want anybody to think we're in a bad situation, except for the fact, we've saved a lot, and we've got ourselves in this position. Now why, why are we here? During COVID, the pandemic, we added teachers to the elementary school, five, five teachers, we paid for that with Essers money. We've heard that the lower classroom sizes are much better for elementary teachers, we tried to maintain that, and we purposely didn't reduce teachers this year because we wanted to maintain that level. Well, you know, we're gonna have to take a look to see what we can do moving forward to have the least class sizes but stay within our budget, we'll have to right-size this as we move into next year's budget, just so everybody's aware. So hopefully in a nutshell, it may, it may be a little simpler, but that's where we are at. Not happy about it, I'm not gonna be, I, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that, oh, this is rosy, but I am gonna tell you, I've done it for a long time, and we just simply have to right-size it as we move to the next year. We are, we are gonna ask you to approve this budget at the one-point-nine million dollar deficit to work from, and we will look to, to be much better in June when we do our final budget. Any questions that you have for Mrs. Obermeyer or myself?
I just have a question, I know that we've heard about the, the teacher shortage a little bit, and so I just wondered with the grow your own, I know there's a, there's a requirement for them to stay within the district for a certain amount of time, what happens if we don't have a position for them in, in whatever they decide they're gonna go to school for?
Potentially, they could go somewhere else, but our goal is, with all the retirements and things like that, we, we, we will have some openings, right? So potentially, we wouldn't hold someone back to go to a local, but they have signed something saying that they will stay with us for as long as it took.
Them to go, okay, yeah.
And we were very intentional.
Okay.
As far as looking at succession planning, what, when could people retire? When do we think they will? And so those, we aligned the applicants.
The best we could.
And the programming, the best we could did those.
And you may have noticed we've already posted positions for next year, because we want to get out there to, you know, the colleges with the graduating, because, because of the shortages, just to try to get folks right away when, when we.
I guess just a little more color commentary on the revenue side of this thing, and we, we use words like conservative, and I just, for someone, I've been on the board fourteen years now and been close to the budget, and when we say conservative, people need to understand, we have a range of options when we, the two big revenue assumptions typically are around number of students and how much state aid we get. Without, every year we do the same thing, we, if there's estimates on state aid, we take the lowest number. If we have a range of estimates on students, we take the lowest number, with the idea being that if there's a surprise, our surprise is always gonna be on the positive side. In my time on the board, this is the, really the first time we've seen those assumptions not come to fruition, and when you look at those two items, that's eight-hundred thousand dollars out of a one-point-nine million dollar budget deficit, so we're not happy about it, but I think our path is all, I mean, you could all, you could argue that it's not just conservative, it's pessimistic when we think about revenue, which I think is the right, we will continue to take that tack, but just for perspective, first time in my time on the board that those really conservative assumptions, we've missed those, were usually always better than that, so I think there's reason for optimism that we can close the gap primarily on the revenue side.
And this is why we've been good stewards for the last ten years and things have worked out properly, now we have a year that things didn't align like we thought they would, and, but good explanation, very. Anything further for Ms. Obermeyer, Mrs. Obermeyer? All right, technology and Mr. Maynard, good evening.
All right, first thing on my list, you've encountered tonight, recently, our finance software updated their password policy, and this is something that we've talked about for a little while doing, so we've recently upgraded the strength and complexity requirements for staff passwords, and to best of my knowledge, it's the first time that we've ever asked all of the staff to change their password at the same time, and it went reasonably well. Reasons for doing this, in addition to this being a good idea, is that, you know, our, our insurance company is always pushing us to do more things to be ready, because they give us our cyber coverage, and so in order to get that coverage at a reasonable price, they want us to do things, and this is one of them. Recent power school incident that did not affect us, but the fact that it could have just kind of hammers home the need that we always need to be doing more, and so as a result, we did that, maybe a dozen people seemed to have trouble with it, staff-wise, once we got going, and so hopefully that'll be good moving forward. Our clock project, the clocks at Beadle Lake are now online, the company installed them in kind of two swaths, so the, they should all be running, except I think the one in the teacher's staff lounge is not working right now, but we are working on that. They went back to the middle school to finish there, I noticed today that they're still not done, so I'm gonna find out what's going on there, and then once we get all those bills paid out, because that was funded through safety grant money, so if there's money left in that account after we get this done, we can move on to another building. And the camera project is going reasonably well as also, the new servers are in and installed that cover the elementary schools, those were paid for entirely by the county grant project, along with the cameras, and all three elementary schools are installed, Beadle Lake most recently, and the company is supposed to have a meeting this week to get them actually focused, pointed and set up, and then we're working to get the software on the biggest staff members' computers so they can see them. So that's going well, we also got some secondhand servers to use for the middle school, high school, and those are close to being ready, we're waiting for a licensing upgrade to be completed, which I found out is gonna be paid for by someone else, we don't know who, either the company that makes the stuff or the company we bought it from, because they're gonna, they're gonna do right by us, because they sold us this stuff in anticipation of the county project, which then took a year and a half longer than they said it would, and so the software got upgraded in the meantime, so there's a paid upgrade to our existing licenses to make them compatible with the new stuff. And so, once somebody pays for that, it is not us, I'm not sure who, but somebody else is gonna pay for it, we'll get that going and we can move forward on the middle high school installation.
Out-arm wrestle, I mean, it's, I do. Any questions for Mr. Maynard? All right, thank you for that. Comments related to agenda items, do we have any?
We do have two for robotics, since we've talked about it, if you want to, or do you want to save that until?
It's really not a agenda item, but in the interest of expediency, I'd say, let's go.
Tal and Rob, about robotics funding?
Please state your name and addresses, and you have three minutes, although there are three of you, so we'll, we'll give you a little latitude there.
I think they're gonna give me their time, I'm just telling you right now. My first name's Peter, last name Ekman, E-C-K-M-A-N, I live at one-one-one-six-zero-eight-B Drive North, which is exactly four miles that way, and I drive it every day to go to robotics. I'm one of your head coaches for the high school team, so thank me, thank you, I want to thank you for giving me your time tonight. Right now, I'm sorry I was late, but I was teaching kids how to code a robot, and one of the, one of the dads came and got me and said, hey, you're coming to the board meetings, and I said, okay, so shifted my, my mind. I read through what you guys put out at the beginning of the meeting, and it is great that the school does provide some funding to that through the grant, I also work for the state of Michigan, so I'm very familiar with that, and have been coaching robotics for ten years, not necessarily here, this is my second season with this team, only because I live four miles away and I have to drive an hour and a half to go to practice every night. And that, that was with Followerville High School, which I started that team. My daughter's been through this program, one of the things, and if you can't tell, I'm pretty passionate about it, I don't have kids inside the school system anymore, my youngest is twenty-six, just got a full-time job with the automotive company that's going to do autonomous big rigs, which is kind of cool, she could make more money than me in three years, so good on her, I want my Corvette. I kill people with kindness, as you can tell, I have pretty good joking background, but back to robotics, we're in mid-season right now, build season, I invite any one of you on the board that want to see what they come and do, the kids are very enthusiastic about explaining things to other times, Rob has been down, and so has Laura, been down to see us when we're building things to categorize our high school program really quick, we have a new robot every year, which is new costs every year, we try to reuse as many things as we can from year to year, and that's what increases the cost per year, it is one of the most expensive programs, and I'm not gonna lie about that, the average is about eighteen to twenty-six thousand dollars per year, and I can break that down, yeah, wow. A lot of that is all about participation fees, now the MDE grant that we currently get from the state of Michigan and we qualify, is about six to eight thousand dollars, that depends on the type of program that you're running, a middle school team is much easier to run, cheaper, than it is a high school program, just for instance, just to pay for our two events that we get to go each year, putting a robot on the carpet to compete is six thousand dollars, that has no money towards a robot, it's no, nothing with parts, nothing with the tools that we need, nothing with raw materials that the kids use, that's just to put something on the carpet, and it's something that I cannot control. It's something that I question first, First Inspires is the parenting group that governs First Robotics, and I asked them, why is it so expensive? They don't like me asking that question, because businesses are businesses, and I get it, they're nonprofits and they have to run things, but when it comes down to, to small communities such as this, and I, like I said, I did come from Followerville, which is very much the same way, there's not a lot of money in the school systems, and everyone is trying to get money for their thing. So one of the things I could tell you, and I'll reiterate, it's about eighteen to twenty-six thousand dollars, aside of that, you say, hey Pete, that's twenty, that's anywhere between twelve to eighteen grand, where's the other money go? We have to build robots, there is no kit with our robots, we're building from raw materials, that means big tubes of aluminum, they get machined down, we build a, a new robot each year, so it's not a new, it's a new game every year, and you build the robot and the kids design the robot to compete in what the game is. I could talk about robotics forever, if you can't tell, and I did drink a Red Bull before I got here, so there we go. It helps me energize and caffeine is my lifeblood in robotic season. Myself, we have three mentors, or we call them coaches, but we call them mentors on our team, myself, Tom Back, and Mike. Two of those guys, according to your thing, are paid, and that's true, that's part of the MDE grant, is to get the MDE grant, you, you have to pay us, but I'll tell you that every single cent of that money is paid right back into the stuff that we need for a robot, we don't pocket that money at all. If it's something, we, we typically go in the hole into our own personal budgets, just to make sure that we can get the stuff we need. In fact, we, we, between last year's season and this year, this is my second season with the robot, with your, your high school program, is we started a nonprofit organization called the Harper Creek Robotics Boosters. That is not just focused on the high school team, it's focused on all STEM activities across this community. We've went in front of, I just put myself out there in front of the Optimus Club two weeks ago, to try to get a grant from them, I even joined the Optimus Club, because I like giving back to my community, I am a prior service member, just like Tal and is, I thank him for his service, and it's something that I want to express to the kids and try to get them enthused about something that is not a video game system sitting in their hand, or the phones that I remove from them every time they come into my build shop, because we have, and once you visit, they put their phone actually in like a little rack, so they can concentrate on what we're doing, just to get them to do that, to unplug themselves and focus on something that is not death scrolling across social media, and we want to, don't want to go down that rabbit hole, is something that they can dedicate their time to. As, as I said, my daughter went through this program, that's how I got exposed to it, I'm not gonna tell you my age, I'm a little long in the tooth, but this program didn't start until three years after I got out of high school. Had it been part of my life, I might have not gone in the service, because I've always been that guy that tinkers with his hands, I was an airplane mechanic in the service, now I lead the, I told you I work for the state, I lead an entire programming group that does everything for Department of Vets across the state of Michigan, so every application that a vet or vets get funds from are my applications, and some of those, those team members that I have on my team have, have actually done robotics. So I look at that, I'm fully involved, probably this deep, if my wife can tell you, she can't get my attention between January and, and April, and April, which is our season. I'm just trying to do as much education I can in my little time span that I can, because as I said, there, there's a lot that goes into that. So we're thankful for what we've got, by all means, because at one time, Mr. Greenman, and I thank him, we had this little room that we were sharing with the football coach, now we have a fully carpeted, like competition carpet space at the end of this building, which we very much i- i- improves our competitiveness, because if you can't practice like, just like football, I used to coach football, if you can't practice on the right field, how can you play the game correctly? A lot of sports and, and robotics has a lot of common thing, across the state of Michigan, there are four, or five-hundred-and-eighty-three high school robotics teams, and we're one of them, we're not, one of nine in the area, and if you ask me, hey Pete, why don't you fundraise, we created that nonprofit so we can get those funds, but here's the kicker too, and we're kind of behind the eight ball, is that there's nine other teams, or eight other teams in this area that are competing for those same funds to approach commercial entities, whether that is I-I Stanley, whether it's Kellogg's, whether it's the Optimus Club, or anything of that nature, so that's why we're asking, me as a taxpayer too, because I live four miles down the road and I pay taxes, even though my kid's not in the system, to see if there's any, any additional funding that we can get for the team, just so that we can up that level of competitiveness, just as an example, last year was, was the best year that this team's had, it's been around for twelve years, we were five points away from going to Michigan's, Michigan State Championships. We were five points away from going to Michigan's, Michigan State Championships, five points away. And I can't get into that, how we qualify for that, again, it'll take hours. But, we were five points away, but knowing that we didn't have the funding to go to states, is something that would heartbreak my heart. I'm getting a little emotional, to the kids, because they, they put their souls into this for, you know, six weeks, seven weeks, building something from scratch and rolling and competing, that if they get to state championships, and I say, I, I, I have money, I, I'm ready, not, I have a nice retirement fund, but I can't bankrupt my retirement fund to take the team to states. So just to go to states is around ten thousand dollars, including lodging and food, because it's at Saginaw State Valley, uh, University, so. Do you guys have any questions? Um, I understand if you don't, 'cause I threw a lot at ya.
Yeah, uh, we, uh, generally don't, do not a- answer questions, or don't give anything, but we appreciate the presentation, thoughts, and, um. Thirty seconds, how's that?
My name's Doug Catchman, K-A-C-H-M-A-N, I live at fifty-three Santalina Trail, S-A-N-T-A-L-I-N-A Trail. I have a tenth grader that's in robotics, and I have two seventh graders that are in robotics as well. One of the things that is really interesting, and I love telling people when we talk about robotics, is that, um, in elementary school, you, we are, we teach all of our kids that you were supposed to be friendly, you were supposed to be helpful, you were supposed to, um, be competitive, but be friendly competitive. And then at some point with our regular sports, we move away from that, we get into our tribalism, where it's Lakeview versus Harper Creek, or Harper Creek versus whoever. And with robotics, it's not like that. They have something that's, uh, it's.
Gracious.
Gracious professionalism. And what that is, is that, if you don't know how robotics works, is that there's, um, the teams come together at one competition, and it's not just you against all the other teams. You're, you have alliances, and in middle school, it's two teams versus two teams, and then in high school, it's three teams versus three teams. And those teams, you have five competitions or six competitions, um, and those teams change every time. So you can't have a rival, because your rival will be your team partner. And then if you are good enough and you get into the finals, you then get to pick your alliance members. And then, so you were then picking whoever beat you, because they have a better robot than you, but you happen to get into the finals, then you get to pick them to join your alliance. And that is something that is rare amongst any high school or, uh, school activity, is that you don't have an actual competitor other than a, a nebulous, uh, other, um, which is really neat. The middle school team, um, they've managed to do really well, um, they've gone to state four, I think, out of the last seven years that I know of. Um, and this year, we placed third. And in Michigan, um, it's hard to put a, uh, it's hard to say just how difficult Michigan is. And there's about thirty-five-hundred, uh, high school robotics teams, uh, Michigan has over five hundred of them. Same thing with middle school, uh, that there is, I think, seven thousand middle school teams, and we have about six hundred. And I know I'm, I don't have any more time, but, um, Michigan is considered, um, a worlds within the, uh, within the competition. We have more teams than Texas, we have more teams than California, um, I think we have currently the highest number of teams in the United States. And, uh, that's because of our great manufacturing base. So, um, we can obviously, Pete talked about all the money, um, but really, it's, every kid has the opportunity to go pro in robotics. Every kid has an opportunity to succeed, um, most sports, you don't have that luxury. You have, I don't know how many kids are on, on a football team or a soccer team, but, I mean, you have kids that'll go to state, um, but then that's where their career will end. And with robotics, this'll be their career for their lives, um, so, thank you.
Thank you, we, we appreciate you guys' enthusiasm, we thank you for being coaches, and we thank you for presenting to us tonight, so.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Were those the two? Okay. Alright, we'll move on to the consent agenda, Madam Secretary.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the consent agenda as follows. Approve the general fund check, school services fund check, school lunch, and student and school activity fund checks, in accordance with the list discussed. Approve the following minutes as reviewed, January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, regular meeting minutes. January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, superintendent compensation committee meeting minutes. January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, policy committee meeting minutes. February sixth, twenty-twenty-five, budget committee meeting minutes. So moved.
Then moved by Mrs. Wallace, supported by Mr. Smith, do we have discussion? Hearing its scene on, please call a roll.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterston?
Yes.
Mrs. Alred, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
Alright, thank you for that. Information, discussion, item A, school safety update, Mr. Ridgeway.
And we met today, um, we used to have the, the, most of the time talking about the emergency operation plan draft. You can expect as board members, that you will see the final emergency operation plan, either in March or April, just depending on how quickly we get through the, the draft process. And so that will update us and put us in line with where we need to be with our, our safety operation plans.
Any questions? Alright, we'll move on to schools of choice.
Each year, we have to decide if we're going to participate in school choice, um, for, on the overhead and within your packet. I put last year's school of choice, this is what this, this looks like. My recommendation is that we sim, we stay similar in terms of targeted for first through twelfth. And so what I will do, um, once we have our second count, uh, which is this week, determine how many slots we have per grade. So in this chart, you can see how many kids we have at a grade level, and this would be current year, and then how many sections of classes that we have. And then the school of choice, SLC twenty-four, twenty-five, is the slots available. So what I'm asking you to do is to be targeted for that, and then for kindergarten, we have been open, so unlimited school of choice. And we've been that way for a long time, and one of the reasons that we do unlimited in kindergarten, but not the rest, is that, uh, we wanna ensure, I, that we, so, we're doing this so we can keep the programs that we do, you know, we, we heard from robotics today as a program in the school, but we have lots of programming. And by accepting school choice students, it helps us maintain those programs that we have. I don't think it's a good idea for us not to have school choices, in my opinion. There are some folks that would say, well, you know, why would we have kids from outside coming in? Well, so we can maintain what we have. If we didn't have school of choice, we would have one less elementary school. If we didn't have school of choice, we'd have lots of programs that we couldn't offer, in our high school specifically. And so I think this is something that's a good thing for the district, and, you know, again, in my opinion. And so I would recommend that we do targeted first through twelfth, we do open or unlimited school choice for kindergarten. I will have to set the windows for application period, you can kinda see the sample. So for first through twelfth, it'll be somewhere around the first or second week of May, to the first or second week of June. And then kindergarten will be open for a longer period of time, and that needs to be open before the first kindergarten, um, countdown to kindergarten is coming up on March twentieth. So tonight, I'm asking you that, to participate in school of choice for the fall semester. You will decide if we wanna do school of choice for winter semester next year, which we have not done for a long time. We typically just do school of choice for fall. And so, you're also directing me, once we do that, once we have the numbers, to fill in the blanks and how many slots that we have. You'll notice last year, we did not have a lot of slots available in first through, really, if you go all the way down to eighth, ninth, I'm sorry, eighth grade. If you add all those up, there really wasn't very many school of choice kids that had the chance to come to Harper Creek, because we had talked about how full we are within our school district. And so there's a little bit more room in the first grade next year, but you can see, we don't have a, we're not adding a ton of kids with school of choice, we're just maintaining. And, and, um, when I say filling classrooms, I mean filling classrooms to a spot where we, it's feasible to run the class. I'm not trying to fill them up to capacity, I just wanna make sure it's feasible. I hate to get us in a situation where all of a sudden we only have two sections of a elementary class at a building, and then the class sizes do get big, if that makes sense.
So for the kindergarten, uh, we've talked about like the, we have to have, is it ready start that's at the high school, because we don't have the space to accommodate all of the?
Right, so we have, uh, great, great start readiness at, is that how you call it? GSRB.
GSRB.
At the high school, two classes at one at U L A currently. And we don't have space at Waddles or Sonoma to run those programs.
Versus last year, is that supposed to be, you say next year?
What's that?
Said twenty, you said you were going up next year, twenty-five potentially?
Yeah, next year would be twenty-five, twenty-six.
It says last year, the heading says, is that supposed to be next year?
Oh, so what, what this, what that would have meant, so twenty-four, twenty-five, the previous year, we should say previous instead of last, and that would have been the twenty-three, twenty-four numbers of slots. We had, we had a lot more slots open the previous year. As a board, we said, you know, we wanted to make sure we stayed at that twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent, and so we offered less slots.
Gotcha, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does now.
Yeah. I'm assuming that we wanna stay in that same range, we're not looking to expand it, we just, like I said, maintain with where we.
Questions, comments? Alright, move on to Michigan Association of School Boards, two thousand twenty, twenty-five election.
Alright, we have to make a decision tonight on who to support for the M A, the MSAB, uh, Board of Directors for Region Six. I'm gonna flip to that page, hopefully.
It is Tiana Harrison or Elizabeth Odell?
So Tiana Harrison from Kalamazoo Public, or Elizabeth, Elizabeth Odell from Saint John County High State.
T- Tiana is the incumbent, I believe, is that correct? Or not?
I didn't notice incumbent.
I didn't either.
Neither are incumbents, maybe?
I don't think so. Does anybody know the, any, either of these two people? If not, uh, a lot of times we look to say which one is closer, but I'm not saying that's how you should vote, but that's. And then the other piece of the pie is, you know, ten years of service, oops, for service, and the other person has twenty-seven years. And they have to be certification, similar.
Anybody have any feel for, for, or recommendations?
They had a lot of the same, like, um.
They thought they were pretty similar.
Yeah.
Both, they were both good.
I think they have all, held all four positions. Anybody wanna make a recommendation?
Well, if we're going by, by location. Kalamazoo was.
I get, I, I'll just throw something, when I read them both, I thought they were both great, I guess I was leaning towards Tiana.
Yeah.
After I read them.
Support.
Okay.
I think that's, but.
That's the way I, that's what I was.
Alright, so when we get to the, um, action section, um, maybe you can, the chair can read a motion that reflects Tiana.
Yep.
Alright, uh, we're gonna move on to the superintendent contract renewal.
Hi, Mr. Bass.
Alright, well, it is in board book, um, let me grab that, it's also in my bag, but I did not grab it out.
Well, generally, the contract is a three-year contract, um, typically, we do it after the evaluation. The new law in Michigan says that you can have an exempt year, it's only years of either e, either effective or highly effective. And so this was an exempt year in the, in the con, or in the contract, in the evaluation piece, and so this time of year is typically when we do that. And what is typical, it's a three-year contract, and so we basically just add that third year on a, on an annual basis. So this is really just talking about what that third year may look like.
And this contract is redlined, so it is, uh, it's not redlined in board book, with the appropriate changes were made by Tru and Law Firm to update, uh, to any necessary legal, um, changes. And in general, um, there were, uh, about five different changes made. Mr. Ridgeway's life insurance was increased to two times, um, his salary, which was his standard, I believe, for, for.
I think so.
Others. Vacation days were increased, based on his length of tenure. Got a standard three percent increase in pay. We did add, um, time off for the Fourth of July week and the week between Christmas and New Year's. Besides that, no other major changes were noted, and, um, anything that Sarah or Barry would entertain, who are also on the superintendent compensation committee with me?
Other than just thanking him for another exemplary year.
Yes.
The, the redline, the Tru and updates, really it's important, because that gets you in the right position legally, you know, if, if things happen, within the, either the relationship, or to me, with health, or, or any other reason, that protects the district, and so the changes that Tru made really were for, you know, in the district protection side of the contract.
And we are not reevaluating this year because of your, um.
Three years of effective.
Highly effective, yep.
But we will have to start the process, so I, I think that's something we need to take, we got trained, we need to take a hard look at setting, setting the goals. I think the strategic plan is gonna be a piece of the pie in terms of these other goals, is my guess, and then we'll kinda go from there.
Okay.
Would make some sense.
Alright, we'll move on to policy update.
Oh, this was a lot of fun, so.
It was riveting.
And there was really three different sections, I, I, I tried to outline it, you know, as simple as I possibly could in the, uh, board briefs. Generally, the first thing is, we wanna talk about renaming facilities, and we wanted to have a procedure, and so Tru did give me, um, a policy. I didn't really like it, and so the committee and I took a look and we redlined it, so we added a few things. The first part is just putting in our, um, mission, but really, in terms of if we're gonna rename a facility, commemorate a facility, we did add, so significant contributions to the quality of ed, extracurricular programs for the district, or public or community service, were the things that we would name for. And then if you go down to the section in terms of what would be the steps, so there would be, um, a request made to the board. The board would then establish a committee, and with at least one administrator, one teacher or coach, one parent, one community member, and one school board member, minimum. The naming committee will meet, determine a written recommendation to the board, the board would then hold a public hearing, because we wanna get some input from the public. Uh, we did add on there that it needed to, the public hearing, I missed, I missed a word, by the way, the public hearing will be advertised at least in a local newspaper, the shopper probably, and on social media at, at the minimum, just trying to get people here, and then, once that happened, then the board would vote it, they would do yes or no on this name changing. We did discern, there's a difference between renaming and versus naming a new facility. We thought if we had to name a new facility, uh, there would be a, there would be additional steps that would happen, because people would probably, we would do a, either a contest or a survey of what names we should put, put together, so then the naming committee could go through that similar process, if we had a new facility. We don't have one right now.
Okay.
That's good. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll go to the next one, so the next part was.
Michigan Earn Sick Time Act?
There you go, thank you, Michigan Earn Sick Time Act, um, it's just a new, uh, law that came into effect, and it comes into effect on February twenty-first. This puts us in a position so that we are ready for that. Really, the biggest difference is people can earn sick time, like, you work thirty hours, you get an hour of sick time, with a maximum of seventy-two hours a year. Now, all of our employees have more than that, that's about nine days, our employees have ten days of sick time. The difference in the law is that they can take these in one-hour increments, we currently allow half-day increments, so that's gonna be a, a little bit of a change. I know that I heard from Steve Frisbee at the Beyond the Seer Bowl, that there is a new bill to, uh, tighten that up a little bit, so it's easier to manage. But for now, we really need to pass the Earn Sick Time policies, and it would do a, a couple different things. So it, it, it would add policy forty-two oh-five, I'm sorry, it would, it would eliminate forty-two oh-five and have the policy of the forty-one one-three, which is the Earn Sick Time Act, because the Paid Medical Leave Act used to govern, now this is the one that governs. So take a policy away, add a policy in, and then there's a forum that we have for notification of employees. I recommend that we move forward with that. And then Title Nine policy, this was a update that came last minute, and so the board took a, or the, sorry, the committee took a look at it. And so if you haven't heard, uh, Title Nine. And so if you haven't heard, Title Nine went from the twenty-twenty-four version back to twenty-twenty version because of a court decision, a federal court decision that occurred. And so there are eighteen policies that are, are affected. They basically go back to what we did prior to this last summer. We, we just changed the policies in the summer, so it just goes back in time a little bit. I could go through every single policy change, but generally, it just simply puts us back a year or two in time. And by doing, it's all legal, there really is no question in the policy to, to even consider. So I would suggest we, I would recommend we do the Michigan Earn Sick Time Act and the Title Nine policy, and then if you have any thoughts on the naming district facilities in terms of changes.
What does our motion read right now?
Uh, is it all three aligned?
It, it names all three.
Okay, so.
Yeah, if there's any comments, we can talk about it during the action, if they're on the naming facilities, if we want to update that at all or separate it out.
Is anybody going to have anything they want to see different in the motion? Okay, just want to, just want to check now. All right, so move on to the strategic plan. As everybody knows, I've sent out, I think, a couple of times on that. I didn't hear back from anybody. So I'm assuming we're good to go, but you want to pick it up from there, Mr. Ridgeway?
Well, I think I showed this document last time, and I sent out a couple of different times in terms of what, the look of the, the strategic plan. Yes, there were things that were, that are changed, but typically for verbiage reasons to make it easier to read for our community. That was the, the thought process. There were a couple of things that were new. One is a comprehensive program for special needs students as one of the objectives. We know that we have a lot of behavioral issues in the younger grades and trying to come up with a plan. To help that, a lot of that work is being dealt with, our multi-tiered systems of supports within the districts, and they're working really hard on it. And we've actually seen less, or I'm sorry, office referrals this year than we've seen in past years. So we're seeing some growth, which is, which is good, although we still hear about some kids that struggle. Another thing, planting seeds for corporate partnerships wasn't directly in there, even though it was talked about some. And, you know, talking about robotics tonight, that's, that's an idea of how can we get those seeds for more corporate partnerships beyond the nonprofits we already work with? In my opinion, everything else is, was pretty much, you know, within the strategic plan that you looked at last year. This would be an update to that.
So I did look at some other school districts' strategic plans, because to be very honest, when I saw this, I was like, this is ginormous, and this is very wordy, and I don't know if this is like, if we're really trying to like appeal to the, the community. If I was just a parent and I was reading this, it's just a, a lot, but like, not a lot of information about what we're trying to do. But this is what a lot of them look like. They, they are kind of a little vague and pretty wordy. And so, I don't know, that kind of helped me feel a little more warm and fuzzy about our strategic plan. You know, I just think, I don't know. I have a lot to say, but I'm, I will email versus talking about it here just because of time. And I think it's more to do with our objectives and our, you know, our goal setting and, and that kind of thing, less about what we have as a strategic plan.
Yeah, I, I think as you look at this, the, the five strategic priorities, you know, drive achievement, invest in our people, create a culture of collaboration, improve communications, and create our future, these would be the, the major things. So in an outward-facing document, those would be the things that would be highlighted along with mission, vision, and I believe core values. I have asked our marketing team, our marketing group, to come up with a draft. They did have a draft, but I sent it back because I wasn't happy with it yet. So that, this is not what the outward-facing will look like. It will be something that will be much more easy to read, I think. And so I think when we see that, we may, maybe we'll feel better about it, but in terms of the verbiage, I believe this is what my, I'm hearing is that we want to potentially move forward with as, as an action item.
I did like that a lot of schools, and a lot, there are some school districts who used like parent surveys and like the, the information that we collect from like after conferences or focus groups, or, you know, they had a team of people and included them in the strategic planning. And I think that I, I really like that idea, especially if we're looking for community buy-in moving forward for a lot of the things that we're planning to do. So just for future reference, I think that would be a good idea.
Originally, when we put this together, we had that larger group. Yeah, so, but I, as far as follow-up, I think that can be implemented. And I think the whole purpose of redoing this is so it has some, some strings that come down that can be, it's a living document, not just a document that goes on the wall. And I think those objectives and some of those pieces under the objectives will give the board more control and try to measure and, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Adapt.
I mean, this is, to Rob's point, I mean, what you would share with the public has got to, it's got to deliver a more concise message than this. But on the flip side of that, the strategic plan is only as good as all the detailed work that has to be done that delivers on the objectives. So I think we've, boy, this has been, what, a year and a half in the make, I mean. And I agree with you, it's, there's a lot of words there, but man, when we came out of that community session a year and a half ago, there, it was like an encyclopedia, so I do think it'll be good for us to see what the.
This is hard to see, but these are the details underneath each of the. It's really hard to see. But just as an example, implement a comprehensive curriculum, you know, the, the smart goals, the action steps that, that would be required, and to be honest, we, we are in process and have been working at this for a few years. And so we're, we're getting closer and closer and closer to delivering on that. And then the, the same for, you know, our, our PD plan and our, you know, all the things that we would do in terms of that. So all those details are actually included.
And this is the same format that some large corporations use to deliver value to their stakeholders, so.
I agree with you. I think, I think that outward document has to kind of grab the community and get them fired up.
Yeah.
And then, then, then we gotta, we gotta have the details to make sure that it just doesn't become a piece of paper that you hang on the wall, that you're actually delivering against what you say you're gonna, you're gonna deliver.
And Rob, when do you expect to have that final Madison Avenue?
I had a, like I said, a draft on Saturday that wasn't happening.
Okay.
So I would say this week. I was hoping by tonight, but it's not happening.
Not there, okay. All right, we've been working behind the scenes to help move that along, so. Anything further on the strategic plan? We are going to take action tonight to approve it. All right, any comments from the audience? All right, we're going to move on to action items, school of choice.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approves participating in school of choice program for fall twenty twenty-five, with kindergarten being unlimited school of choice and the first through twelfth grades being targeted school of choice. Further, the Board of Education directs Superintendent Ridgway to determine the targeted school of choice slots available for first through twelfth grades and set application time periods for both unlimited and targeted school of choice.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Smith, supported by Mrs. Waterston, Waterston. Do we have discussion? I almost did it. I almost did it.
You did do it, Bo.
I did.
It's Waterston.
I want to put that extra key in there. I was thinking what you said that one day. All right, do we have discussion? Sorry, Shay.
Okay.
No discussion, please call the roll.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterston?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, Michigan Associate School Boards, two thousand twenty, twenty-five election.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education takes action for their collective vote for the M A S B Region Six Board of Director one-year term for Tiana Harris Kalamazoo Public Schools as discussed and reviewed.
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Wallace, supported by Mr. Smith. Do we have discussion? Hearing seen on, please call the roll.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterston?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, thank you for that. Action item C, revised two thousand twenty, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the revised twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Smith, supported by Mrs. Wallace. Do we have discussion? Hearing seen on, please call the roll.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterston?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Action item D, superintendent contract renewal.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the superintendent contract renewal as discussed and reviewed.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved by Mrs. Wallace, supported by Mrs. Waterston. Do we have discussion? Hearing seen on, please call the roll.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterston?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, thank you for that. Action item E, policy update.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the policy updates to the naming of district facilities, Michigan Earn Sick Time Act, and Title Nine as presented.
So moved.
Support. I'll do, support.
All right, it's been moved by Mrs. Wallace, supported by Mrs. Reisner. Do we have discussion? Hearing seen on, please call the roll.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterston?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, last but not least, the strategic plan.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the strategic plan update as discussed and reviewed.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Smith, supported by Mrs. Wallace. Do we have discussion? Hearing seen on, please call the roll.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterston?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, and items for the next meeting, anything that anybody can think of as of right now, as usual, I will text, email?
I wouldn't mind seeing an update on the number of retirements. I know that the March first deadline is approaching for their incentive, so.
I can say, I can say I have, I can say poof, but I would receive four letters so far of teachers.
And did the Waddles Spectance Club give you a good update tonight? Good job, Tony. All right, we will adjourn at eight oh three P F. Good evening.